This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, and I'm gonna need everybody to speak up because my speakers are really bad. So I'll call the meeting to order, Committee of the Whole, August 26th. Record of attendance, Lindsay has that, no absent with regrets. Declaration's a conflict of interest, anyone, and you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda, do we have any additions or deletions? Okay, motion, please.
Your worship, on that point, I hope I can invite a question from somebody when the reports from the chairs comes forward to speak to some incidents arising out of the water.
So that is, that's on a council meeting, we don't have that added in here, but there is there is a letter that we can-
Well, I can reply when that comes up.
Certainly can, okay. And I got the deputy mayor six feet away from me. So can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
No, move.
Okay, deputy mayor, who just seconded that, Councilor Dawn? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carry, thank you. Okay, staff report, C A O.
What about approval of minutes?
I don't have any minutes, we're not in a council meeting, we're in a committee of the whole.
Oh, right, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm there.
It's all good.
Your worship, there's a report attached, and I'm open to any questions you may have. I just want to mention, since it kind of relates to the report, is Lindsay has put together and issued a request for proposals that we intend to do to replace our council meetings whole platform, so your online agenda, the reports that spill out of it, and all of that. We've had a custom-built solution for going on 15 years now. It's ending, we're approaching its end of life and support, and so we're reaching out into the marketplace where, in fact, we've received many ideas that have helped us to build this, our current version, and seeing what is available, and we hope we'll have a recommendation for council in the next several weeks, and then we'll move into implementation. But I wanted to mention that, we've had some difficulty actually generating my report the last few months, so that's just one of the little issues that we've had, but anyway, just let you know we're moving on in that regard, but if there are any questions that arise out of my report, your worship, happy to answer.
Um, I have one, your worship.
Go ahead, Councilor Hood.
So, C A O, under partially completed, there's a, we made a, we, it's, we made a motion that staff initiate a water service lateral inventory as part of the asset management plan, and staff repair plan. An interesting conversation with Steve this morning, yeah, he's going by my house and taking my water reading, and I'm wondering how we're making out with that.
We really haven't gone far with that at all, Cliff. Steve has been collecting some information as he's been doing major reading, but in terms of a more full-on effort, because of the number of capital projects that engineering is taking on this summer, we kind of pushed that work until the fall, winter.
I think that's understandable, Steve shared some information with me that frankly, on the details, in terms of the various types of lead sources, or maybe they're a good deal more complicated than we might have originally thought, Jeff, especially you and I, we're talking about. And so I suspect staff have, I know staff have been talking with Steve about that for some of that practical advice.
Yep.
But, um, so, carrying the thing forward, it seems to me probably that that discussion we had earlier about doing a sample conditions survey from some volunteers might be a first step, but we'll talk about staff about that.
Sure.
It's not something that's gonna go away.
No, that's right.
All right, if any of the councilors wish to know any more detail about this, this fairly significant stuff, and it's something coming our way as a result of changes in the standards set by the Council of Environmental Ministers, federal government, and then the province implements. We're gonna be dealing with this during this, but also the new council, when they come in, will have to deal with this as well, so. Pursue, thanks. See you.
Any more questions for the C A O? Okay, operational, oh, a fire department, there was nothing there.
Your worship, I can just report on a couple of things related to the fire department. So, um, our deputy chief, Mike Devoo, is taking a, hopefully a short-term leave from his duties. He, I don't think it's telling stories out of school or anything, but he had a workplace accident last week, and so that's taken him out of commission for the fire service. And so we've been in touch with Mike, and of course, we're hoping for speedy recovery. On the fire chief front, in terms of the replacement, I can tell you that we ran a series of interviews last week, and we have, or week before last, sorry, and we have a follow-up interview this week with one candidate, so I'm hopeful that we're approaching the end of that process.
Excellent.
Oh my God, look, my computer's running upstairs.
Yeah. Anything else for fire, any more questions, we're good? Okay, operational services, that's Chad, and he's on, if anybody has questions for Chad. Otherwise, the report's there, a lot of stuff on it. Okay, planning department? Anything for planning?
Just to comment, your worship, I read it every month, and I look at all the activity that goes on in the office, and even I almost can't comprehend all the good activity that the town benefits from and will benefit from in the future. So thank you very much to the staff in the planning department.
Wade, did you have a question?
Yes, I was just wondering what the situation is with a town planner, do we have one as of yet? Or is any investigation being done on that front?
So we've had, your worship, if I may, we've had a competition out for quite a while now, we do have a shortlist for that one as well, and we're hoping to, well, our consultant is arranging for interviews, and so we'll be carrying out some interviews in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions there? Okay, asset management and infrastructure, Mark is on, Profi's on, if anybody has questions. Mark was on. Oh, there he is.
What do you do with all your spare time, Mark?
Oh my gosh.
I should put a hard head on and go back.
Mark, just a bit of a tease, the bottom, the Lake Milo Boathouse works, by the way.
Few things left to do.
Yeah, it's all but complete, I know.
Finance, Jerry's not here, but he just said, you know, the tax bills, the second bills, I guess, will be going out shortly, I think some folks already have them, if they're getting them by email, maybe. So those will be going out, and Jeff, I think, with regard to COVID and the concerns that we had, and certainly with that work I did with NSFM, you know, trying to make sure there was a bridge, but we really had some good numbers with regard to taxes.
Yeah, so taxes, as Jerry's reported in the past, taxes got paid on the first bill, and we weren't surprised by that. And, you know, I think the taxes will get paid on the second bill as well, but we'll be tracking that very closely, and we'll update council as we approach and get to the due date. One thing I'll say about what the NSFM did is, one of the things that we thought was that we weren't gonna have a problem this year, but that we were very concerned about what may occur going forward if COVID is with us for a very long time. And, um, it, you know, it is gonna be with us for a while, and so we need to be very, very mindful and concerned about the economy and people's ability to pay as we approach next fiscal year.
Okay, any questions?
No, you've answered the question, Pam, you introduced it, and Jeff answered the question. I was just wanting to make sure that our income from our municipal taxes was the same as last year or near that, and that's all I was concerned about, thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, I got a question, I have a question. A lot of mortgage companies collect the taxes through the monthly mortgage pay and remit them, or did, do they still do that nowadays?
They do that, yeah, if you have a mortgage, I think probably most, if not all, financial institutions have that available and make the payments.
So, do we have a handle on what percentage of our people who are paying taxes are under that kind of, I'll call it, protection?
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can ask Jerry, so those would be payments we receive directly from the banks, and it shouldn't be difficult to sort out what percentage of residential would be under that.
The reason I ask the question is, it would give us a really good handle on sort of what we've got in terms of guaranteed payment coming in planned forward into next year.
Sure.
Might be useful, I don't know how much time it'll take, but it might be useful to have.
Shouldn't take a lot, if it looks like it's gonna take a lot of time, we'll let you know that, but we'll see if we can come up with a number.
It's guaranteed as long as people can pay their mortgage.
Right.
Right, it's no guarantee, different than anything else.
Your worship, if it goes into default, the taxes are gonna come. They rank ahead of the mortgage, they're gonna ensure that the taxes are paid, so it is guaranteed, to be blunt.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's, that's really interesting.
Yeah, the only situations we've had in the past have been when, that haven't worked out, is when mortgage companies walk away from a property, right, something that's really decrepit, but usually that is a guarantee. Lindsay, your worship.
I just ran a, I ran a report, and we have 549 properties with mortgage information on file.
Not bad, Lindsay, not bad.
Very good, as a matter of fact.
You know what, I'm gonna say this, not to embarrass Lindsay, but this happens to me 10 times a day. I ask a question, and she has the answer before it's out of my mouth. Thanks, Lynn, you amaze me every single day. Jeff's a close second. Okay, so any more finance questions? Yarmouth Recreation, Frank is on, and he sent a report ahead. With theirs, or anything extra you needed to share, Frank, are you good? Wade?
I just wanted to congratulate Frank, I don't know if Frank is there or not, but congratulate him on what they've been doing in odd circumstances this year, of course, everything's odd, and the pop-ups and those kind of activities that they've been doing have been very good, and so congratulations to them.
Thanks, thanks Wade, it's definitely been a different summer, and I'm not taking any credit, Sarah LeBlanc, Julian Camo, and our summer staff have put their heads together and tried to figure out things to do that are safe and fun and different. So it's been a different summer, but we're keeping on trucking just in a different way.
Absolutely, congratulations, good job.
And I support that, Frank, I've been by a number of the locations, and there's activity every time I go by.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to get an update from Frank, I know at Skateboard Park, we tried something different this year, and I know early on it was going really well, and I was by there today, and with lots of kids, do you wanna give us an update on how that's going?
So, it's, it's, I guess, we've had some challenges there. A lot of kids not respecting the rules, even though we do have Jalen there enforcing, but it's a new program, Jalen's been a supervisor, a maintenance worker, a first-aider, and even a dad from time to time, so he's had a challenging summer, but a good one, and it's something that I think we wanna expand, I'm even thinking for next summer, you know, doing almost like what we do at Milo with our supervisors and canoe rentals, maybe we kind of have more of a presence there, instead of one staff person, possibly two, so we're covered more, and that we look at doing some more instructional type of things with skateboarding and BMX, and even using the park and the pad in between the playground and the skate park. So, we are planning on Friday, doing a little fun barbecue and a fun day at the park, so if there's any councilors out and about between 12 and 4 on Friday, we've got a slip and slide going on at the playground, with the fire department helping us out with that, and a barbecue and some fun skating and prizes going on at skate park.
Oh, that's really neat.
I heard the guy who's barbecuing is pretty right on.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilor Steve, for offering up your barbecue, I'll have oven mitts for you and H90 masks.
I'll be there, bud.
Steve, you spend a lot of time at the barbecues, I gotta say, good on you. So Frank, the only question I had, and I actually just had a gentleman call, was somehow providing water down there for the kids, like, how do you do that? Is it, and I said, I was blunt, I said, I'd love to put a fountain in, but that would be beaten to a snot within the first 30 minutes, we just can't do it, but.
So that's another task that put on Jalen, poor Jalen would bring two jugs of water, and the kids would be coming with their empty bottles for him to fill them up, so. So Jalen has moved, so he used to live very close to the park, so I told him whenever he needed to go home, run home and get replenished, use the washroom, whatever, so he's not living close to the park now, so the last couple of weeks have been a bit challenging for him to fill his water jug, so. So yeah, so that definitely can be something that will go on the report for next summer.
Yeah, we need to figure out a way to get water to the kids without just handing them a bottle of Gatorade, because I understand somebody did that, and then they had to go clean up, you know, 30 bottles of Gatorade with two inches drank out of each one, so it's just to make sure that they don't get overheated. And I would say, you know, maybe it's the Hope Center, or, you know, something like that, that you could fill up jugs, but aside from that, yeah, a way to maybe get some water to those kids. Anything else for Frank?
On that, I just wanted to pick up on that, I wouldn't give up on that, your worship, I think there are bulletproof dispensers out there somewhere, you see them in other places, and there must be, you know, the guys could look into it anyway, I think there's something installed there that would be robust enough to withstand just about any kind of unwanted activity, I do, I may be wrong, but I think it'd be worthwhile looking at.
Yeah, Jack?
Your worship, I actually, I saw a couple of examples of what Councilor Hood is referring to at the FCM conference last year, when we used to have conferences where people got together. Anyway, there were a couple of vendors there that had very robust, well-built water dispensers, some of which had water bottle filling capability as well as just drinking fountain, so I think maybe Frank looks into that, I might be able to find some information for him, you know, something to look at for next year, and it might not be the only facility or park where, or something like that, would be welcome.
I agree, good stuff. Okay, so you want a motion to look into that, somebody need a motion? Okay.
No, move.
Okay, Jim, motion to look into a water dispenser at who seconded that?
Kim.
Dawn, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carry, thanks, folks. Economic Development, Natalie's on with us.
Natalie, could I ask you a couple of questions about the facade program?
Because I got so much noise in behind me, I can hardly hear.
Yeah, no, I understand that, if it's too noisy or whatever, I can ask Natalie later, but the facade program, or say Ice Works, Natalie, and I know this not only from my own observation, but from my sister's words to me, they've been in the program since its very beginning, and they've not completed their project, and there's probably only a few dollars worth to complete the project to get their $5,000, and, and so it'd be a shame to lose that, because I think Joss Malone is interested in mural on his wall, and I've given him the name of two artists, and nothing fancy, that's, they're 85% complete according to your report, and they're not gonna, you know, they show really no interest in completing their project. And so those are just two that I observed that, that it's hard to follow up, you know, when someone has a chance to get up to $5,000, they're just not, they're not completing their project, I'd be the first to complete the project and get as much benefit as I can out of the program, but those are two businesses that probably aren't gonna finish their project by the deadline, the end of September.
If I can comment, Ice Works, they just have a couple of items to do on their punch list, so I know that the facade society chair is gonna follow up on that specifically, and I don't think that will be a big item. Mr. Malone is really responsive, nothing fancy, the challenge has been in getting contractors, so contractor came on board as early as they could with the weather permitting, and the work that's left to do, they need that contractor to come back, and contractors are in high demand right now. So I think that will get completed, it might be a little bit beyond, but there, there, and I do agree with you on that.
Thanks, Natalie.
Any more questions for Natalie?
I do have two things to add, Mayor, if I could, if there are no other questions.
Yeah.
So I was remiss, Dooley's is, should be added to the list of approved applications. You'll see that they have been working on the front facade, reshingling new signage, so in my next report, you'll see that added there. Dooley's, Dooley's.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so worked with Mr. Rod on that, and the other thing is just really to see if there's interest from council. I have 100 letters to distribute to all of the businesses within the Streetscape project area, and if any of you would like to help me with that, I'm just having a little bit of mobility issues, I'd appreciate that, so I know Mike is gonna help me out, but I didn't know if, and if you wanted to help deliver those letters as well. I was able-
I'll come by Natalie sometime.
Okay, I have a really positive response to our communications that we've been updating the businesses, we have 100 and something people on the distribution list, so Mike and I, Mike Herter and I have been, as well as the rest of the team, have been working on that.
For the Streetscape, you mean the communications piece for the Streetscape, or the, yeah, that's the one thing I had marked off. I was really glad to see that there's a detailed plan for it for everybody, because there's nothing worse than work being done when you don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, maybe our communications officer will send it out, the link to the Get Involved site, we're ready to launch this week what we have, and we'll be updating it frequently.
Okay. Yeah, and that mural one will get going soon.
There is, so we're, the Facade Society, they've identified the date for the H E M, that's gonna be October 5th, and in preparation for that, we've put together some communication that will be going out through Facebook, on both the society and the town Facebook page, the website, and the communications officer's looking to see what would be the best method for print, but anyway, they're looking for nominations to the board, and in addition, what they've decided is to create a subcommittee for the mural grant program, and looking for applications on that, so we'll be pushing that out soon, and the H, at the H E M on October 5th, those will be announced.
Right. And we still get to see the murals first, right?
Yes, so the process, as described in our previous Committee of the Whole, is that it's an open call, so once all the applications are received, they'll be jury by the subcommittee, and then those applications that are eligible will then be brought forward and presented to the Committee of the Whole before the final decision is rendered by the subcommittee.
Perfect.
But we're not gonna have a, we're not gonna be making decisions as to which mural is approved, we're just gonna see them, right?
Yeah.
You're not going to vote, but certainly your opinion counts.
Yeah, so, so, so if we get 10 10 mural drawings with lighthouses on them, or the Blue Nose, or something like that, we can, I just need us to be able to say, that's not what we're after. Right, we've got the real thing, like, we don't want the same, that's all, I'm just a little fearful that people think, because we live in a seaside town, that we have to draw seaside all over everything, when we got the real thing, that's just my thought.
It'll be interesting to see what's presented.
Yeah, sure will. Okay, any more questions for Natalie?
Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks, Natalie. Okay, Economic Development, man, okay, business, request for decision, South School Basketball Court Lighting.
So your worship, your worship, I, so I wrote a request for decision on that based on receiving some information from a lighting contractor. I talked to Frank earlier today about it, as I was implicating him for maintenance. He and I believe Chad had some conversation and actually visited the site, and I visited the site this afternoon with Frank, and there's more that's needed there beyond the lights. The asphalt pad is in beautiful shape, very flat, no holes, it's great. The basketball standards, for the most part, are great, they've held up almost 30 years now. One of them is leaning and needs to be reset. Fencing's in very good shape, needs some minor maintenance, but overall, pretty good shape. But there does need to be some money put in there before the basketball courts are really usable in the form of new backboards, and Frank, I think you'd offer to do some further investigation into that, so I'd like to suggest that we just defer this item, let Frank do some further investigation, and bring it back with a more wholesome, complete recommendation.
And I think Steve, if I'm allowed to talk, your worship. Steve, I think Councilor Barry, Steve Barry, brought up a very good point when he introduced this issue, is, is in this in the recommendation, Jeff, it is, the fall is coming, right, and I know that that place used to be used quite a bit, especially the fall, especially under the lights, you see a lot of ground hockey games, a lot of basketball, and I'd like to see a real fast turnaround, time on this, and even if, or worship, I'd call a special meeting to get this done, once the information is in, I'd like to see this. I'd like to see this going as soon as possible.
How long has it been since people have used that court with lights? Do we know?
Quite a while, I'd say.
Yeah, quite a while.
The, the lights were put in. Sorry.
I think they were installed in 91.
Okay, I asked, I asked the question, and I'm a, I'm a fan, as many recreational facilities as we can possibly get. I always just think, what happens with the neighbors? Do we talk to the neighbors about something across the street at night with lights on? Like what time does it close? Can't be open all night, right? The lights go at a certain time?
It was nine o'clock.
Yeah, generally, yeah, nine or 10 o'clock, dusk.
All right, Jim?
Your wor, your worship, I'd like the recommendation that Jeff has put forth today for reading, and now he wants to defer it, which is fine. My, my, my thought was, if whatever budget we approve when Frank comes back, this would perhaps come out of the Yarmouth Recreation Budget. It wouldn't necessarily be a town, town only budget. It would be Yarmouth Recreation, that was one of my thoughts. Just, just sort of thinking out loud, and that's all. I just thought of.
I, I hadn't thought of it that way, but I don't think that's, that's necessarily wrong, Jim. Frank, what's, what's the status of your, state of your, your capital planning?
So we've switched our capital planning to each council depending on where the project is. So the, the main, the ongoing maintenance, so once we get the lights going, we get the repairs to the hoops going. We get some pickleball courts painted on the court, some few, you know, it's not a, a big, big job. A few repairs to the fence and the court swept, that, that place is ready to boot. So the only thing is that we would have to have a maintenance budget item added to our next year's budget. So that we make sure that we, you know, do repairs and regular maintenance as needed.
So you, so we're paying for everything upfront and you're doing maintenance?
So the ongoing maintenance would be included under us, yes.
And that's how, did you just say that's how it works with all recreational facilities?
So we, we, Milo is the first project that we've done where we split the capital. Yarmouth Recreation used to have a capital budget line, we don't have that anymore. So we picked Milo as our first project, even though the municipality did partner on that project because of where Milo is between the two. But moving forward, any projects that are happening, say at the Hebrew and Recreation Complex would be under Modi's capital budget plans. And anything to do with recreation in the town of Yarmouth would be under the town's capital plans. That doesn't mean that we, we can't ask for support. That's, that's totally up to each council, depending on what project it is. But that's, Milo is the first project that we've worked on where we've split the capital. And I have no capital budget under my department.
I got, I, I, I'm going to go against the grain on this one, your worship of a may. I think it's a stretched ask then, on this particular facility for the municipality to commit on the capital. Unless we're an amalgamated municipality. I, I mean, it's located 100% in the town. There's a very good aerial photograph here. And if it was expanded, we might have a better idea of how powerful impactful it is on the adjoining neighborhoods. But I mean, that place was quite active in the past. And Frank's suggestion about pickleball interests me because I know that that sport is the fastest growing sport in North America. And it's a sport enjoyed by seniors and all walk, and middle aged people and the rest. So that, that can be a very good facility there. We could get that darn school repurposed, would be great. Anyway, I just offer those comments, I, I just don't think it's reasonable to ask municipalities to cap on that.
I think we're in agreement. I think, I think when Frank explains, we look after what's in town.
Yeah.
And then they look after maintenance, I think that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
You did fill it up?
Yep.
Yeah, Phil agrees, Steve? Me?
So there's, there's a couple of ways we can go with this, your worship. If you're, if you're in a hurry to do something there. You know, I did discuss with Jerry the $25,000 budget, which he felt that we could, we could carve out of the capital that we have this year. You know, we could approve a budget of 25, get Frank to do the work in terms of sourcing the, the things that need to be done other than the lights. And once he has a handle on that cost, come back for, for a secondary allocation, which would allow him to complete the light work, if that makes any sense to you. So, so start with the 25,000. And in the meantime, figure out how much additional is needed and come back for that. Which might have to be next spring's budget.
Yeah. And then hope if we sell the school or something happens with the school that we didn't just.
Well, so, that's right, you can divide that off, or you can, depending on whatever becomes of the school. If, if it isn't divided off, if it's a public use or, or an agency that you could, you could contract with to have that used or leased by the town to provide the recreation space.
Right?
Good, your worship.
We need a motion to defer, oh, sorry Clifford, go ahead.
With the information that the pads in is good condition as Jeff describes, you've got a couple of hundred thousand dollar assets sitting there in terms of what it would cost you to build another pad like that. And so rising that pad at a cost of $25,000 is pretty, a pretty good investment, I think.
Right on. So motion, a motion to defer, Jeff?
What's the motion, please? What's the motion, please?
Motion shift to defer.
Well, that was the recommendation. But I, I heard some urgency in this conversation, so I'm suggesting an alternative approach, which would be to approve the 25,000, but to redirect it not to lighting, but to the other improvements that need to be made. And Frank to come back with a secondary request that would give you enough money to do the, do the lighting afterwards.
Perfect. Okay.
And understanding all of that, we want done as quickly as possible.
So what you're talking about doing is fixing the physical deficiencies, which are not major this year. And then next year you'll look at lighting, in a nutshell.
Must we get some in the budget? Okay, all right, who's making that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Don? Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision Jenkins Street.
Want to speak to that, Chad? I'll turn the mic on.
Chad, you're muted, bud. There you go.
So the, the recommendation was fairly straightforward. So this has been on my radar, I guess, for several years. And the previous track, traffic authority and I discussed it a few times. So currently, as the RFD suggests, the, the roadway really doesn't support two travel lanes and a park lane. My personal experience is, I've traveled Jenkins Street several times. And if you have two opposing lanes of traffic, you typically have to yield to the opposing traffic and pull over quite closely to the curb or the sidewalk. So, so my recommendation is that we consider changing Jenkins Street to one way. And the travel way will be from Main Street to Water.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation, I think is well thought of.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion on that one?
Question.
Jay?
Yes.
Have you talked to, talked like to the Bank of Montreal, all of those businesses there on that side?
No, I'm not sure, that's, that's certainly follow up actions. Natalie has engaged some of the adjacent property owners. Maybe she can speak to that, I know we've, we've had one positive feedback so far.
Yeah, I know traveling along that street coming from Water to Main is, I've had a pull over in the, the old parking lot for the phone company, if you might.
Yes.
Okay, good. The old, question, question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Council motions, I don't think there was anything attached there, but we, we had this at one of the meetings and we put it forward to here. So basically, the, the premise is to stop putting the mover and seconder in, in the minutes. Because once we make a motion, it belongs to council. And I think people get mixed up in trying to give people credit for something that belongs to council. So I'm just looking for, and I actually haven't even got the information from the edit in the last meeting. Jeff, did you have anything else? Do you remember what I was talking about there? And we did have, we did have an article, yeah, Ali Mina, yeah, who was, who was an expert in he, in, in the municipal field for meetings. And he said, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be putting the mover and the seconder in. The, the, once you make a decision, it belongs to council. So, so that's what I'm looking, it's relatively simple. I'm just looking for that to be removed from the minutes.
So your, your worship, so in order to get discussion going, like in today's meetings, it's necessary to make a motion and have it seconded for proper discussion. And then at the, and then at, after we've agreed or supported the motion, then I understand. So it doesn't change the, the discussion procedure.
It doesn't change anything, it just leaves people's names out. Because you know what happens? There's a lot of ideas floating around and somebody just says, I'll make that motion. It doesn't mean it belongs to you, it just means you're putting it on, as you said, you make the motion and you second it. To, that's right, to get it on, up for discussion. Then you have the discussion and you make a decision, and that decision always belongs to council, right?
And I heard this.
I'm going.
I, I'll make the motion, your worship, but I was at the seminar that Mr. Mina spoke at. And I think he's one of the leading parliamentarians in North America. And this was brought up, I think, five or six or seven years ago, when he first elected. And I know out in public, I've been accused, and other councils have been accused for either making a motion or seconding a motion for discussion. They said, how could you support such a thing, or how could you recommend such a thing? But when we're all said and done, you still have an opportunity at the vote to record a nay, if you want to. And I think it's a step forward. And once the motion is made, it's passed by council, it's council's vote.
Who's, who wanted to, I see lightweight, are you on?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
Good. Okay, so Phil made the motion, have I got a second or somewhere? That doesn't want to be recorded?
Second.
Okay, Counselor Don, any more discussion?
Question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you folks. Boarding up policy, this is the stuff that, okay. I have to remember what that was.
It's come from a specific incident, your worship.
It's actually come from a number of incidents where we have properties where you can get a policy, you can get a piece of paper. Permit, you can get a permit for a year if your place is not inhabited. And then after a year, you can get another one. So what we have, and I think everybody on council understands, we have an awful pile of, of vacant properties in the town. And they're, they're going downhill. So basically, we just need to discuss, is there, is there a way? I'm trying to find it where I wrote it down. Is there a way that we can get some teeth into this boarding up policy? So that people can't just every year get another permit, which doesn't cost a penny, to keep their place boarded up? In the meantime, the, the value is going down because they're not being looked after. They're going to end up being torn down, the tax base is gone, nobody has to look after anything. There's the problem. We need some teeth because the properties are deteriorating. So we need to, how do we somehow strengthen that policy if that building is staying vacant? They have to be boarded up according to the fire, I think it's the fire inspector says they have to be boarded up for safety. So the town ends up boarding them up if they're left vacant. So Jeff, do you know more about that? I just had to get it out.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm curious, is what, what do you want to be the, where do you want things to go? So you have a building that's vacant. It doesn't need to be boarded up, it needs to be secured. So if a window, if a window was broken, the window either needs to be fixed or it needs to be boarded up. In order to board it up, they require a permit. And, and we, in a vacant building, we, we do issue permits. So I guess the question is, you don't want to see a building vacant and boarded up. What do you want to have happen? Because what you want to have happen, you know, you talk about teeth, teeth to do what?
Yeah, so, so that's what I'm throwing it on the table. And somebody else might have, somebody here might have an idea. But the last thing we need, and I'm going to throw this out here too, we got frigging housing issue. We, we've got a housing issue and we've got these places boarded up, being deteriorated. Nobody's living in them, nobody's looking after them, and they're in our town. So how do we, how do we get some teeth in there and say, you know what, you're going to have it boarded up and empty for so long? Either fix it up, or you have to sell it, which is probably not something we can do.
So maybe, your worship, it's as simple as this, if you can do it. And that's for the lawyers to tell, to tell us. But what I would suggest is that consider something like, after two years or three years, it shall be deemed, deemed to be an unsightly premises on the, dangerous and unsightly premises by law. You take that by law and demolish it. Something like that.
Okay. Okay.
So we could, we could look at that as, as, as an avenue, right? An order under dangerous and unsightly, and how far we can go with that. There's also a section of the MGA that deals with abandoned buildings. And, you know, a building may not be abandoned just because it has boards on it, but maybe there's something we can do there. So if you want to refer the issue to, to legal counsel to, to come back with a report on what we can do. But if the end, in the end, you want the buildings put back into productive use, is that the, for the most part?
So I'll make that a motion, that the matter of the boarding up of buildings over a definite period of time be referred to counsel, to, legal counsel to come up with a potential draft that would address the issue and put a time limit on the number of years or the duration of the permit periods. So that it could then be implemented under the unsightly, dangerous and unsightly premises by law, or the MGA, one the other.
Second by Wade, or did you want to talk, Wade?
Well, I would just like to say that that's absolutely right. We have to, we have to put our foot down because something has to change. And yes, excitedly, seconded.
Thank you.
Question.
Go ahead, questions called?
No, no question.
Oh, sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess the question would be, do we have, as, as people that are running the town, do we have a way of not giving him a permit? a way of not giving him a permit? You know what I mean? This permit and then we give another permit and then we give another permit. Is there a way of not giving a permit?
That's what the motion should find on. I would think that, uh, there would be a discretion, you would give the, give discretion of some kind within a time limit. And that's for Greg to, or for, yeah, Mr. Bear to work out. Yeah, there's no, there's no, uh, at this point, there's no limit, um, expressed by council in the bylaw as far as how many years you're, you'll tolerate uh, that. So that's part of the, part of the issue is, is putting a limit on the number of years until now time you can have a boarded up building before you have to do something with it.
And it's not.
I think it's. Yeah, I think it has gone, it has gone two years. I think we, they need to do something. You know, I think two years with, it's unsightly for two years. I mean, for being boarded up. And I think they need to do something. I just think in the recommendation, at least consider somewhere around two years.
There, there's also, um, if I may, your worship, just to speak on this, uh, we had an issue a year or so ago with, uh, a property owner who was, uh, we were challenging on, on their boarded up, uh, uh, status and, and the, the property owner, um, went around town and found several buildings with boards on the windows and and asked, I thought, some pretty good questions because not every example of a, of a building with boards on the windows is necessarily vacant or, or unproductive. And there's some samples on our, on our main street where, uh, old buildings that used to have windows now have, excuse me, board panels. Uh, they're not unsightly. Um, it's just that some of those upper floors in the older buildings are very difficult to, to occupy. And for quite a period, as for long as I can remember, uh, some of them have been boarded up, but the buildings have been occupied on ground four. So anyway, it's a complicated issue.
It is.
Right. That's fair enough too, Jeff. That's a, that's a very good point. But to me, that's another thing that needs to be addressed. I mean, we've always dreamed of a main street with occupancy up above. And as Mayor Pam has said, and as we've all been saying, we have housing issues here. You know, that has to be looked at at some point. Maybe not today, but it does have to be looked at. You're right.
Sure. Cause I just said I'm calling the task team together very, very soon. And that's, housing is the issue. Um, okay. So we got a mover and a seconder. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Council photos. So listen, we've got us a dilemma. As we got Counselor Steve there looking mighty fine with his new do and we need to have a council photo. So I had a, a brief discussion with Jeff and this is, he, he had the best idea, which is, um, be, maybe before our next council meeting in September, uh, which we, are we going to try to do that inside? Jeff, did you say or no?
So that's an option. Um, a thought I had was maybe to do a picture in front of Town Hall, a group picture where we wouldn't have to be together for a long time, but long enough, right? Take our masks off, stand side by side, all facing the same direction, smiling, not spitting and.
And we're less than 10. We were less than 10.
And, uh, get, get a, a professional photo. Now I'm hoping and we're going to talk about it shortly on the agenda, that we might even be able to have an in-person meeting. Um, based on some of the work we've done, but, uh, that was the thought maybe before the next council meeting. If it's a nice evening, uh, outside, if it isn't, then, uh, get the photo, get it done inside.
Yeah. And I asked if we were having the meeting in here because at least then we would all be here, but it doesn't matter. We just set a time. Everybody come, uh, to Town Hall, get a photo outside, group of less than 10, we're good to go.
Should we wear, should I wear a shirt and tie?
You have, geez, yeah, everybody needs to have a suit, like dress or, or your dress appropriately for.
Where you're here with carrot investors, bring your chili hat.
What's, what's that balcony on Frost, well, Frost balcony? What, what was it put there for? If it wasn't put, put there for something like this?
What, the balcony?
Yeah.
I'm on that balcony all the time.
Trying to talk you off of this, that's why.
That's right.
I love that. So anyway, Lindsay will set that up if everybody's okay with that. Lindsay will set it up and we're good.
And sure, the doctor's shirt.
We can all cry because Phillip.
I will do that in October.
Okay.
I'll go up in October.
In-person, in-person meetings. Jeffrey, you're on.
So thank you, worship. So council had asked us to look into the possibility of, of, uh, returning to in-person meetings. And so, uh, Lindsay and I and our, our team here at Town Hall, uh, Mike, uh, have done, um, a bit of work around this to figure out how to make it work. We were thinking not only about how to have an in-person meeting, but also how to support hybrid meetings going forward because, uh, that was something we've talked about is how we have people attend, even if they can't necessarily on that night be present in the, uh, in the council chambers. So we've actually, we, we ran a simulation, uh, earlier this, uh, this week. We set up the council chambers in a way that provided for physical distancing according to the, um, the current protocols of six feet. What it means is that not everybody can sit at the, at the council table as we know it because we're, we're show, almost shoulder to shoulder at that table. And, uh, it doesn't meet the requirement. So we need to bring in additional tables and do a, do a different configuration in order to get all the counselors, the solicitor, myself and, uh, the executive assistant at the table. So we, we, we currently in the council chambers have have tables set up, uh, that provide for six feet physical distancing. We had a meeting there this week with the, uh, senior staff and directors. Uh, there were 10 of us, so it was a good simulation of what a council meeting would be like. And, and we learned a few things, uh, both in terms of, uh, uh, how a meeting, uh, feels, uh, in person and, and in that configuration, how we can provide, uh, a, a video representation, uh, that we can put online because we've, we've been doing that for over 10 years. I think it's something we would want to continue. So, uh, what we came up with is, um, obviously to, to, uh, make the physical distancing requirements, seats are six feet apart. We're kind of sitting in a circle, more of a circle configuration than a U. Um, not anticipating the public coming into the meetings at this time, uh, and under this protocol. And so much like this meeting, the public will have transparency through the minutes being posted and through the video being posted, but not be able to be physically present, although we could entertain, uh, presentations or participation in the same format we are here by people pre-registering and being, being virtual. So being in a hybrid meeting situation. Uh, masks, uh, because it's public space, uh, masks would be worn at least until you're seated at the council table. Uh, we would have the doors closed and, uh, uh, once everyone is seated and six feet apart, I think taking your mask off would be, would be appropriate and comfortable and, and safe. We'll have hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies. And of course, we will do cleaning within the chambers, but, uh, to your own, uh, comfort, if you wish to use the, the cleaning, um, products that we have in the, in the building to, to ensure yourself that extra security, that's, that's perfectly acceptable and, and something that, uh, that I routinely do in my office, even though we have our professional cleaners to, to, do it as well. Uh, we would not be bringing any food into the meetings or beverages. And so we would encourage you, if you, if you want to have a coffee or a water or a cookie, uh, that you bring that for yourself. And we would discourage, discourage sharing just like at school. So getting to the, to the technology, we would anticipate using this, this same platform, the go-to meeting platform, but only one session will be running in the council chambers. So some of you will know what I'm talking about when I talk about our Polycom CX 5000, uh, video conferencing unit. It, it has a camera, a six camera configuration that sits above a teleconferencing unit. This is exactly what this is for. So that will sit in the middle of the circle. And it, it is, it is noise activated or sound activated. And so when the mayor speaks, it, it, it has a 360 degree camera. It will, it will, uh, have the mayor in the frame when somebody else speaks or, you know, they raise their hand or wish to speak through the, through the, um, audio system. Uh, the mayor will recognize them. And as, as I would speak or Wade would speak or anybody else, the camera will immediately shift to them. Now, the, we can feed that into the, to the go-to meeting and it provides a single, a single image, a single block. Anybody who's attending hot, um, outside or, you know, presenter would be another block on your go-to meeting, uh, screen. That works pretty well. The, the only drawback to that is that because of the distance between this unit, which usually sits on a conference table being sat in the middle of a room, uh, you know, it doesn't have a zoom function. And so people are smaller, further away from the camera. And the camera, the unit is almost 10 years old. Uh, so the resolution of the camera is fairly low. But I'm, I'm encouraging that we use that initially to work out the bugs and make sure that, that the concept actually will work. And if we like it and we're going to continue with it, we might consider replacing that unit with the, the, its, its sister, its newer, up-to-date, high-definition, uh, sister unit that, that's available. As far as the audio goes, we are, we're fortunate to have a great audio system in the council chambers. I say great, usually great. Um, that, uh, that will pick up the audio and actually can, helps the mayor control the meeting in terms of who wants to speak and recognizing speakers. All we would do with that is of course, we, we buy some longer wires to, to move some of the portable microphone units around that circle that we've set up. So there'll be a few extra wires around. Um, but, uh, other than that, that system works well. Now, the one thing that, that I've discovered trying to bury these technologies together is that we can't have any sound amplified into the room because it messes up the video system. So the, the sound that you will hear through the audio system is necess, excuse me. Sorry about that. It's necessary because of the size of the circle will be in that, that things are amplified. We tried our meeting without it and, and people like myself who are quieter just simply couldn't be heard well enough. Um, so amplification for the purpose of us sitting around the table would be important, but in order to get that, the benefit of that, I'm going to ask that you wear earbuds or, or, uh, headset. You can plug that directly in your microphone. I don't know if you've ever noticed that. I've never used it myself in 16 years, but I plugged it in this week and I was amazed by the quality of the sound that I was able to get. And I have a volume control. So if, if, uh, if I'm, for instance, a quieter speaker and you're having, still having trouble hearing me, uh, you have a volume control on your earbuds that you can, you can turn it up to hear very, very well. That audio will also feed into the go-to meeting. And so you'll have very good audio quality and okay video and, and, and the automatic switching. Uh, for anybody who's participating from away, we have two large screen TVs in the room. We'll position those so that anybody sitting in the circle has a pretty direct view of one of those screens. And the volume will be turned up, uh, so that everybody in the room can hear. So like say, we have a presenter from CMHC, they would be on the screen and everyone could hear them. They could hear us because of our great audio system. And, uh, and so we think that'll work. Um, the only thing that, that I think is, is important is that around this is to understand this is, we're, we're going to test it a couple of times before we go live with council. We'll test it with staff. The earbuds is an absolutely very important part of this. So if you're comfortable with that and you're comfortable with it for the first meeting or, or three, that we'd be projecting a standard definition image rather than a high-definition image. Um, you know, that, that's a compromise to, to prove the concept. Once the concept is proved, if we like it, we can replace the unit with a high-definition unit. Um, but I, I would say that maybe as soon as the, the council meeting in September, uh, we can have the bugs worked out, the cables purchased and the system ready to go if, if you're up for it.
I walked into the, uh, council chamber today and I thought we're going to have our meeting there today. It's all set up. It looked, uh, it looked impressive, but at the same time, Jeff, a little bit overwhelming, but, uh, with, with the reading that you provided and the explanation you provided, uh, that it's, uh, it's worth trying for especially a person like me, not, you know, kind of non-technique sort of thing. So I'm happy to try it.
Okay. So, so the room right now is a bit messy because I haven't, I won't put skirting on the tables so they look a little more professional for those that aren't part of the, of the, of the council table. And we've put some things in there, um, some pylons and so on. Uh, we stacked chairs. I want to clean the room up so that the presentation to the public is, is, is above, uh, standard that you'd see there today.
What do you think from us? Go ahead, Wade.
I, yeah, well, that's a good question. But to me, I, I just can't wait to get back added personally. As good as the, the technology has been, and it has been for the most part, other than Cliff, uh, things have been really, really good. No offense, Cliff. Uh, but, uh, you know, and it's great that we've proven that this can be done this way. But, uh, I'm ready to get back in a room with all of us together, feed off of the energy, read the body language a little better and get down and dirty to, with the work of council. And so let's get this done.
Get on with it, right, Wade?
Exactly.
But now I just need, well, all I need from you, your worship is, is your willingness to come into the room under those conditions. Uh, and to give it a try and to be as you were with this platform when we started, um, understanding that, that there may be some hiccups as we get, as we get the wrinkles ironed out.
Okay.
I can also be available, Jeff, to come in and just when, when you're organizing, I'd love to sit and learn too, because it takes me twice to get the swing of things.
It, it'll be easy for you. Okay. So, so we'll push forward. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll buy some cables. We'll, we'll test and retest and, uh, we'll aim for the September council meeting.
Agreed.
Do you need anything from us now?
No, uh, if you want to make a motion, uh, that puts it on the record for staff to proceed with the, uh, the plan to, uh, to meet in person for September council. Um, now the only caveat is we'll pull the plug if we can't work out enough wrinkles. Okay? But we're feeling pretty good right now.
So move, your worship.
Okay. Move by deputy.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Wade. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carry. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Correspondence for action. We've got, uh, Yarmouth Events Association for the coal shed grant. Um, so, so we got the letter, but there's also, uh, we received the budget. Does everybody have the budget?
I don't have the budget.
Hey, just emailed this afternoon.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, who wants to start? Cause I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support it. I was going to say.
Could I say, your worship, that, uh, I'm generally in favor of that, but, uh, because I'm not looking at the budget, I can go to my emails and second. But is it, are we the only municipality that's been, uh, requested?
We are. So it's, it's, so I'll give you the, uh, I'll give you the budget quickly because I have it in front of me. So income is town of Yarmouth, 2,500, corporate sponsors, 1,000. So that's 3,500. The expenses are production, 1,600, artists, 1,200, COVID protocols and signage, 250, staffing, 250, miscellaneous, 200. So so from my standpoint, number one, COVID, even though it says protocols and signage, um, we're encouraging gathering, I guess. I don't like that we're the only municipality and we really have, um, we have a lot of tourism businesses that are in a lot of trouble. And this doesn't, this doesn't seem to fit it for me.
So I'm, I'm looking at the budget, your worship, and, uh, so I'm, I'm not, I've said what I want to say.
I think we lost him.
No, I think he's on, he just might have, Jimmy, are there? His, his audio's on. Jim? Don't know where he went. Can you call his cell phone there, Lindsay, make sure he knows that?
It'll be interesting what Counselor Cleveland would say if
Well, if you'd like me to, I'll talk, I'll speak to it. Um, I do understand your points, and that's fine, and it's, it's completely up to you guys what you wish or don't wish to do. I, I'm the guy who actually submitted this, full disclosure. The reason I was, I was, I submitted it because I was, I was asked to submit it.
Yeah.
Just a moment here, and so I did do that, but I, I do believe that it's time to kind of start doing some things. And so I actually, if you guys are okay, I would be willing to put on the floor that, make a motion that we do support this. The more, the more that we do, the better, um, as far as I'm concerned. Um, it's, it's time to kind of figure out things in the, in the course of the pandemic, and I'd really like to see some music return. Um, the Coal Shed never happened this year, the Coal Shed Music Festival, and so this would be just something that would be a day-long thing. I don't think there's a whole lot of money involved. Um, you know, I'd be, you, you have the budget in front of you. They're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to, to pull that off. Plus, they were going to raise up about a thousand dollars' worth of sponsorships. So I would like to see something like this happen. I'd like to see more of this kind of thing start happening. Um, that's kind of the sum of it, really, uh, for me. I, I really do think that this is kind of an important thing that we need to start doing. And so I will be supporting it, but if, if you're against it, that's, that's absolutely fine.
Wade? So, okay, go ahead.
I got a question for you, since you're the, uh, you're the music guy and probably the technical guru sitting around the table. Is there a way to stream, I don't know that much of, I know, I know the wonderful work the Coal Shed's done over the last, uh, bunch of years, but is there a way to livestream or get that out to a broader audience, like, uh, and that might be, has something to do with part of the budget for the sixteen hundred, that people might be able to enjoy that from your own home on a computer or a streaming, streaming device?
Um, the answer to that is yes, it can be done quite easily, um, and we've been doing, we
That's involved in this process here?
I believe it's probably part of what they're hoping to do, although they do want attendance to it. Uh, the idea is to have a free concert and kind of set it up with bubbles, that there's been a lot of experimenting done, both locally uh, and otherwise with these bubbles, where you kind of have people gathered together in groups, and you separate the groups. And so I think that's what they're trying to pull off in this particular instance, but yes, it would be, I'm assuming it would be streamable as well. What I found with concerts that I've been involved with over the summer, um, as good an idea as it is, and it works quite well, chances are, when you're doing it live, while you're doing it live, you're not getting a big audience. There's not a ton of people who are sitting and tuning in, watching something live. However, once it is recorded, once it's been videotaped, uh, the reviews, people checking it at their leisure, almost on demand, if you will, uh, that's what brings up the numbers, but, uh, when you're actually doing something live, you're not seeing a whole lot of people watching.
I can understand your worship's concerns, and I'm kind of about the same to it. Same ilk as you, Wayne, Wade is about the ask, is, you know, just going up to one municipal unit, but, uh, and I was more concerned about the not-supporting part of both the social distancing and the, the crowds more than anything else. What message does that say? But those, that social distancing would have to be really adhered to, to, to satisfy anything, because you don't want anything to creep up on us, right?
Fair enough.
The, the other, I mean, there's just a whole lot of things going on in my head. I, 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 I know it's only a little bit of money. Um, I also know that it's just the town, which, which is just not right, because both of, um, because everybody involved in this is going to come from all over, whether they're performers or people sitting in those seats, or whatever it is. Uh, so that just doesn't, it really sits, um, makes me very uncomfortable. It's, it's going against everything we're trying to, to pull together, to make sure that we all support everything that is for all of our citizens. The other piece is, and I, I think I said it earlier, the, um, the whole tourism, the whole tourism piece, I mean, this is, I mean, this is great for local people, but local people can go for free and set up in Frost Park and have people come watch, if that's what they want to do, or go down to the Coal Shed and set up and adhere to policies. It, it doesn't have to cost, I guess I'm just thinking, doesn't have to cost thirty-five hundred dollars, and uh, is it doing anything economically? Bringing people from town to go down and, and, um, you know, I, I, every time I hear about stuff, I don't, I don't know where it's, I'm just really, I'm really not comfortable with it at all. And, um, and the directors, the directors of the Yarmouth Events are, are all municipal, um, residents, not that that matters, but, you know. Seems like we just always, we're the ones that are always asked to dish out money for, for stuff that serves the whole region. Anyway, that's just, that's just me. I just can't, I can't say yes and feel bad, I just can't.
Sometimes you have to step up to the plate, is the thing, and I think the time has come to do some of that. This isn't, this isn't something that's going to bring thousands of people to the area, no, it, it certainly is not. But it is a good starting point to figure out how these things work. As far as the social distancing aspect of it, as, as I mentioned before, uh, well, first off, you're allowed two-hundred-and-fifty people in an org, in an area. Now, I know that for many that sounds scary, but the way that it, that these kind of things are set up now are with bubbles, and so in order to experiment and figure out how these things go, um, I think this is a really good exercise in, in doing that, and I think it would be kind of useful that way. Um, as for the ask, well, I, I can't comment on that. I know we were asked, and that's kind of the end of it, although it is happening at the Coal Shed, and it is within the town of Yarmouth. And so sometimes, sometimes you have to step up to the plate, and that's my opinion.
You're, you're gonna make that a motion, Wade?
I am gonna make that motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
Left for you, uh?
So, your worship, uh, we've just recently helped fund Sea Fest activities down there, and I've had, uh, an opportunity to use the Marina facilities, uh, quite a bit in the last little while. And, uh, it was down, I think, Saturday or Sunday, I went out for a sale, so I went, and there were, uh, people setting up uh, on the Killen's Wharf to play music, and they did to nobody all afternoon. Uh, in the evening, there was a, when I went back, came back in, there was another group set up, they were in the, uh, what do you call it, the pavilion, the, the stage, and they were playing, and there were about four vehicles there, with people parked in the vehicles, listening. So I don't see a whole lot of value for money here, uh, in the situation we're in with COVID. I frankly don't think you can social distance two-hundred-and-fifty feet people properly on Killen's Wharf and control them to do it. I just, Wade, I don't think that can happen. The parking lot is a parking lot. It's usually used to set up stands, and stands can't, you couldn't social distance on those stands that we have, those portable stands, so. And, I don't know, what, events, no, uh, what are the events, the Yarmouth Events Association? That's not a, an association set up with some kind of municipal funding or participation, that's sort of a private-for-profit thing, isn't it? Wade, do you have an answer on that?
No, I actually don't. Um, I know that they've been around for about, I don't know, they, they had asked for money during budget time, but, uh, I really don't know that much about it.
Well, seems to me in the past, they've been promoting things where there was a, um, I'll call it a profit for, where there was, uh, they were organizers, and I assume earning, earning income from the promotions that they were putting on. Does anyone else know about that? Cause I may be right off the mark.
Cliff, uh, in the second paragraph of the Dear Counsel Letter authored by Rick Allright, it says, "The Yarmouth Events Association is a local nonprofit working to find out legs and get some more events happening locally." I go back to my, I go back to my earlier comment.
Jim, it might be a nonprofit, but that doesn't mean that the people within the association don't provide services and get paid for it.
I understand, I appreciate that, too. My only question is, my earlier question, when I first started the process with the discussion, I'll agree and support the, uh, the twenty-five hundred dollars, only if the Yarmouth Events Association petitions are two systemic municipalities for a, the right amount of dollars to, to have, put on this event ASAP.
Gosh, I, I, I think we're throwing money away.
I'm gonna support, I'm going to support the mayor on this one.
What's, what was the motion, to support this?
Most of us, most of us to support it, uh, Wade made a motion, I seconded it.
Okay.
I'll call for the question, your worship.
Okay, question's called. All those in favor of supporting?
Aye.
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 Contrary?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so I think, I think it's four-three.
Four-three.
I think Don voted yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay, Don, Steve, you said yes?
Yeah.
And you too, you said yes?
I said yes.
Okay, twenty-five hundred bucks to this group. Okay, motion carried. Um, okay, so, uh, no additions, can we have a motion to go on camera?
So moved.
So moved.